Please bow your heads. We certainly haven't had a very good week, uh, this week, um, with a number of things going on, uh, as everybody knows, uh, my district in Joppa Town, uh, a young man was shot and killed, first time ever in Harford County history, anything like that has ever happened in our county. Um, sorry for, uh, Warren Grant and he's the young man and his family. We've been doing some fundraisers for the family in the neighborhood and we've, we've been doing pretty good. Also noticed Tony G's not here, uh, his father just passed away, uh, so he's, he's dealing with that, uh, and his father is a great guy, for those who knew him, he's a great guy. Uh, my mom is down here at the hospital, we're having ins and outs with her, we're not sure how that's gonna go, so, been a, been a tough week. So I offer, I offer this prayer for, for all them, everybody else in need. Don't grieve for me now, I am free. I am following the path God laid for me. I took His hand when I heard Him call, I turned my back and left it all. I could not stand another day to laugh, to love, to work or play. Tasks left undone must stay that way. I found the peace at the close of the day. My parting has left void, then fill it now with remembrance of joy. The, a friendship shared, a laugh, a kiss, all the things I too shall miss. Not be hardened with sorrow, I wish you with the sunshine of tomorrow. My life is full and save very much. Good friends, good times, and love one touch. Perhaps my times seem all too brief, don't lessen it now with undue grief. Lift up your hearts and share with me, God wanted me now and He has set me free. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Guthrie. Um, I, I think it's fair that, to say that all of us on this dais, uh, continue to keep Joppa Town, its citizens and community in our thoughts and prayers, uh, due to the senseless events that occurred this past Friday. Uh, we are extremely grateful, uh, for the quick response of, uh, Principal Williams, the SRO, uh, the Sheriff's Office, first responders, DES, uh, everyone involved, uh, we couldn't ask for any, any faster response. Uh, we will continue to do our part to ensure, uh, public safety education partners, uh, have the tools and resources necessary to keep our students and citizens safe. Um, please continue to keep the families and friends of Warren Grant and the Joppa Town community in your thoughts and prayers. And also, as, uh, Councilman Guthrie said, uh, Mr. Jan Giordano is not with us this evening, his father passed away this past Saturday evening at the age of eighty-nine. Uh, you know, as many of us, uh, know him and refer to him as Big Al. He's most remembered for his devotion to his wife Rose Marie, um, his loving family, and, uh, you know, he is a true patriot, I think a Navy vet if I'm not mistaken, and probably, uh, known for his love of cooking, we all refer to him, like I said, as Big Al, and can fondly remember the Meatball Mondays that he provided for us over the years, and he definitely will be missed. Uh, Council, may I have general consent to move to item five A on the agenda and come back to four A thereafter? Thank you. Consideration of petitions, applications, appointments, and nominations. Council appointment, Harford Living Treasurer, may I have a motion, please?
Council President, I move to approve the appointment of James Edwin Crismer as the Harford Living Treasurer.
Thank you, you may have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. Been moving a second to approve the Harford Living Treasurer, is there any discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie?
Aye.
Mr. Penman?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
There being six affirmative, one absent, the appointment is hereby approved. Presentation of proclamations, uh, Mr. Crismer, would you please join me down front? Bring anyone that would like to come with you, please. Mr. Penman, whenever you're ready.
Whereas James Edwin Crismer moved to Harford County in nineteen forty-five with his family, the Crismer and the Cordori families from whom Jim descended lived in Adams County, Pennsylvania, they experienced the epic battle of Gettysburg firsthand, fostering Jim's lifelong interests in American history, particularly the Civil War, Abraham Lincoln, and African-American history. And whereas Mr. Crismer is nationally renowned for his extensive research and writing on Sergeant Alfred B. Hilton, Jim's work has led to the naming of a park and the dedication of a bridge in Sergeant Hilton's honor, a mural sponsoring by, sponsored by the town of Bel Air and the inclusion of Sergeant Hilton in the Fourth Regiment in Harford County Public Schools curriculum. Whereas since nineteen seventy, Jim has been dedicated volunteer at the Historical Society of Harford County, serving in various roles including research aide, writer, speaker, board member, and publications chair. In recognition of his contributions, he was honored by the George W. Archer Fellow Award in two thousand eight. And whereas Mr. Crismer taught American history for forty years and has received numerous awards for his contributions in education and history, including recognition from the National Commission of the Presidential Scholars, the Archdiocese of Baltimore, Baltimore Magazine, and the Daughters of the American Revolution. Now therefore, we, the County Council of Harford County, Maryland, on this tenth day of September two thousand twenty-four, do hereby proclaim James Edwin Crismer a Harford Living Treasurer, and to be it further known that his lifetime experiences and contributions to Harford County community will provide a permanent record which will recall the past, inform the present, and guide the future of Harford County, and that his memories and histories will be recorded by the Harford County Public Library Oral Historian and will become part of the oral history collection in, of the library.
Thank you, Mr. Penman. So Jim, uh, I'm standing in for, uh, Tony G. this evening. Uh, it's an honor for me to do so. Uh, I know that his passion, uh, for the Alfred B. Hilton, uh, recognition is, is as great as yours, I believe. So, uh, again, it's, it's an honor to present you with this Harford Living Treasurer, or excuse me, this proclamation, and, uh, on, on behalf of, uh, all of my colleagues. Congratulations.
I, I would like to say a word or two, brief. Some people won't believe that. Anyhow, I wanna thank-
Thought he was gonna play a tape.
I wanna thank the Council and the Cultural Arch Board for, uh, giving me this, uh, proclamation, and I wanna thank my wife especially, who decided at age eighty, it was time for me to be declared Living Treasurer. I wanna thank also in a special way my father, F. Wade Crismer, who was one of the earliest Harford County Living Treasures declared back on March twenty-sixth, nineteen seventy-six. And of course, it was he and my mother, my brother Michael, who, uh, came with me at age thirteen months to Bel Air, uh, and, uh, taught me the love of community and the love of local and indeed national history. Many of the more mature members of this audience might recall Thomas Wolfe's book, You Can't Go Home Again. Well, there's a great deal of truth to that, so what I decided to do was to never leave home. And since that day in June of nineteen forty-four, I've been delighted to, excuse me, to be here and to bring, uh, my wife, my Minnesota wife, with me to live in Harford County since, uh, nineteen sixty-nine. So, thank you very much, I look forward to many more years of research, writing, speaking. Uh, when's the next one? The next one is for the Harford County Retired Employees. Down, it is on five o'clock on the twenty-fourth. So thank you, thank you very much, Council, and everybody else.
Pleasure.
Thank you. Mr. Vincenti.
Thank you. We're gonna get a picture.
Oh, a picture.
And if I could have all of you down on floor, do you wanna bring us one? Yep. Here we go.
Say something, let me know, sir.
I'm still fifty-five years old. I'd like to roll.
Congratulations.
One more. One of your daughters, one left, one left county, one favorite.
I have another daughter out in California.
Mr. Bennett? Want to step down? Mr. Penman, you have- Who would you like to call on? All the voices of hope? All the voices of hope? Whereas National Recovery Month is a national observance held every September to promote and support new evidence-based treatment and recovery practices, the emergence of a strong and proud recovery community, and the dedication of service providers and community members across the nation who make recovery possible. And whereas the theme of National Recovery Month two thousand twenty-four is the art of recovery, this year's focus is on the many contributions that people in recovery bring to our lives by offering a platform for creative expression as a means of connection, healing, and empowerment. Art is showcased as a tool for growth and self-discovery, breaking down societal stigmas and fostering greater understanding and support. And whereas Harford County supports everyone in their journey to and during recovery, we recommit to helping them live long, successful, and healthy lives, thanking for their contributions to our communities, and will continue to ensure that those battles battling substance use disorder are supported. Now therefore, we, the Harford County Council, Maryland, on this tenth day of September two thousand twenty-four, do hereby proclaim National Recovery Month, September two thousand twenty-four, and thank our providers and citizens for their dedication to the health of the Harford County community.
Thank you all for being here tonight. Um, I just wanna publicly restate, uh, since it is National Recovery Month, that I am the grown child of an alcoholic, um, and I always, always think it's important to recognize that addiction touches all families, it touches all neighborhoods, it touches all people. Um, and I just wanna thank you all for, all the organizations that are here tonight for the work that you do to help take care of our community, take care of our neighbors. Um, you know, I see people who work in the medical field here, medical professionals, I see, uh, people who work in counseling here, I see people who, uh, work in, in harm reduction, you know, um, who touch the lives of people every day, and it's brave work, and it's important work, and it's, uh, life-giving work, so thank you. Um, you know, not enough can be said about, uh, just what a positive impact making recovery happen has on our community, not just on the person, but on each person in their lives too. Um, and I just wanna, uh, publicly state, you know, I hope Harford County can be a county that has the least roadblocks possible of any county in this state to getting recovery to happen. And, uh, anything that we can do to make that happen, to make Harford County the friendliest county to be clean in, um, I wanna see happen for you all, so that your work can happen, uh, with as many doors and as little roadblocks as possible. So, thank you all, thank you all, uh, so, so much. Um, does anybody, uh, have anything they wanna speak to while you have the floor?
I just wanna say on behalf of, um, everyone, we thank, uh, Council President and the Council Members, uh, for this proclamation. Um, it's important for our elected leaders to recognize that recovery is possible, um, and with all of us working together, um, I think that, you know, we can achieve that. Um, aside from Voices of Hope, I just wanna recognize that Achieve is here, Rage Against Addiction, Chrysanthemums, um, ACR, did I miss anybody else? Office of Drug Control Policy, um, so, we can't do this work alone, it takes all of us, and, um, so, thank you guys so much, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Why don't you get her closer to me? Thank you all.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda item number six, special presentation this evening, Council, we have Harford Land
Trust, Kristin Kirkwood with us, and, uh, several others, looks like to me.
I'm gonna, um, put some right here. There you go. Thanks. Okay. Good evening. Thank you, Council President and Council Members, for the introduction to speak tonight. I know many of you know me, but I'm Kristin Kirkwood, the Executive Director of the Harford Land Trust.
And I'm Jennifer Wilson with Department of Planning and Zoning with the Agricultural Preservation Programs.
Um, this evening, we will be presenting a summary of a report that was released in March of two thousand twenty-four, this one right here, the State of Land Preservation in Harford County. Um, this was co-authored by Harford Land Trust, following a grant from Harford County Government, with Professor Tom Daniels, who is one of the foremost academics on land preservation out of the University of Pennsylvania. Also, Harford County Government was a collaborator, specifically Jen and her colleague recently retired Bill Amos, uh, members of the Harford Land Trust Board, including Deb Bowers, who's a career land preservation professional, and our Board President Nancy Anser as well. So the purpose of this report was really to provide an overview of the progress to preserve land in Harford County, the history of it, and then future recommendations for continued success. We oftentimes, Jen and I both get very good questions around, why are we doing this? What have we done to date? Where does the money come from? How does this fit into the larger picture around land use? So we thought, let's put all of this in a single report with current data, and hopefully, on maybe an every five-year basis, we will re-release this report so that the Council and other decision-makers and the general public at large have this current information and data. Also, we really wanted to provide in a simplified way, an answer to the question of what actually is land preservation, what do we mean when we say that, and then also introduce all of the programs and partners that work to do this in Harford County. So we're just gonna start with a quick conversation of population growth, because if you look at nineteen sixty here to nineteen eighty, our population in Harford County doubled during that period. So land preservation was really born out of that explosive growth, and along with that was an acceleration in the value of land, as well as development, specifically residential development, but others as well. I should say, land preservation is not a no-growth strategy. Harford County, just like many of our large nearby neighboring counties such as Lancaster County, have preserved large amounts of land while also continuing to balance that with significant population growth and economic growth as well. Land preservation really helps to balance these things, to maintain our quality of The data in this report is as of June twenty twenty-three, we continue to collect that and have some recent figures if you're interested as well, but this graph here shows that we have now preserved, as of June twenty twenty-three, more than sixty-three thousand acres of privately preserved land, there's about an additional one thousand acres to bring that to date, Jen can correct me on that number. Um, but this represents a collective investment of more than two hundred and fifty-three million dollars in public and private funding since nineteen eighty-two. So many of you are familiar with this map here, this is our land preservation map, which continues to change, but the important thing here is the colors represent different land preservation programs that total up to this over sixty-three thousand acres. The one commonality, though, is that all of these are voluntary transactions by which a landowner sells or donates, or can sell at a bargain price, the right to not develop the land. This is specific to things such as no non-agricultural commercial use, no industrial use, or residential subdivision. These are all permanent, excuse me, permanent programs as well. Um, we should say, of course, land preservation does not happen in a silo, it works in concert with numerous other growth management tools. Harford County designated our development envelope in nineteen seventy-seven to ensure that development is targeted to areas with planned public water and sewer, and discouraging haphazard development in the rural areas. But of course, zoning is not permanent, we're currently in a process right now to relook at new zoning changes through applications. Um, there are other tools such as the Sustainable Growth and Preservation Act of twenty-twelve, which limits subdivisions and septic areas, which have also played critical roles in land preservation and growth management in this county. So it's really a Venn diagram of all of these different programs, with land preservation being the only permanent construct. There are a lot of other, um, maps and tools as well that we look at with this, one I'll just highlight here is in twenty eighteen, the county adopted a green infrastructure plan to identify the important concentrations of natural habitat. Um, one of the most important strategies identified in this plan was land preservation. There's significant data emerging regarding the cost-effectiveness of preserving these green spaces for flood protection, erosion control, as well as, of course, habitat and So, the larger benefits of why we're doing this anyway, some of them are obvious, but some not so much, so it warrants discussion. Um, we like to say that land preservation provides benefits to the economy, environment, and society, making up a triple bottom line of value to our community. In particular, for economy, there are nearly six hundred farms that make up close to one billion dollars per year in economic activity in this county. It does promote local investment, studies show that easement payments are then reinvested in our community, which gives us a double bang for our buck. There are over four thousand local jobs in the agricultural and related sectors, and of course tourism. We know that agritourism is booming right now, as well as outdoor recreation tourism. Just moving on to environment, uh, more than forty-five percent of Harford County's soils are Class One and Two soils, which are known as prime farmland. These soils, of course, produce more food per acre with less input in fertilizers. Also, these natural resources that we're protecting, we can look at them as actual capital assets to the county, they have tangible monetary value that does not depreciate over time, and we will become increasingly dependent on these resources as we continue to grow. And then also on the society side, we talk a lot about this quality of life, but what does that mean? So protected open space does boost the value of neighboring properties, including the property taxes. Um, access to recreational space is also a top determinant for businesses and families when they're looking to relocate, and studies both locally and nationally have shown that. Um, increasingly, our customers are interested in being closer to their food and their food systems and willing to pay a premium for that local food. Um, also, on the cost avoidance, preservation saves us a tremendous amount of taxpayer dollars through avoiding costly extensions of infrastructure and services based on unplanned growth, and we also have data in the report that discusses that. Um, just quickly on agriculture, because I threw out some big numbers here, um, so this was a twenty eighteen report, and we do have the Ag Census, of course, um, that we can look at as well for these figures, but in Harford County, ninety-nine percent, so let's just say all for the sake of argument, of our farms are family-owned. The farms average one hundred and eighteen acres, but really the median farm size, so the most common farm size is twenty-seven acres. So these are small fragmented properties, but collectively has an enormous economic impact. We also rank among the highest in the state in terms of the estimated value of our farmland and agricultural structures. I won't go through each of these, but the report gives a lot of detail about each of the programs in play in the county, we oftentimes get questions about this. While the Harford County Agricultural Land Preservation Program comes before this council, and this council's been great supporters of that program, there are other programs that we rely upon too, that come from other sources of state and federal funding, as well as donated programs. The three local partners, so Harford Land Trust, we are a nonprofit organization, been around for over thirty years in the county, working in every part of the county. We also have the nonprofit Manor Conservancy, which covers a portion of Harford County and Baltimore County and the My Ladies Manor area, and then Harford County Government, where Jen is, that works out of the Planning and Zoning Department. So kinda with that, I'm gonna turn the next couple slides over to Jen to really talk specifically about how these programs and partners work together to achieve these results.
Okay, so, as you can see on the slide, uh, there is, when you look back to the early history, there were two options for landowners. There was, uh, the Maryland Environmental Trust, which started here in Harford County and the state of Maryland, the first in the nation, and then we had our estate program, and that was all we had as that population exploded. So of course, we had lots of interest in the program and not a lot of money, and then that is what created the Harford County Program, which again, you guys review. And you can see what a boom that was to our efforts, and we have, uh, preserved the bulk of our land with the county program. But you can see, as the years go on, we've added some other programs with like the Rural Legacy Program that came in two thousand, and as the years go, we have a good mix of all these other programs kinda working together, and we're always working with the landowner to try to find the best fit. So, we love it when we can use our county program, and, uh, you guys have been great supporters of that over the years. And then this slide showing, um, just our county program, and I neglected to get the total, but with our county program alone, I believe we're somewhere around thirty-three to thirty-five thousand acres, it's over half of our preserved acres in total. So again, it's been great to work with the council, and we really have appreciated your support over the years, whether it was approving our easements, or just recently, all of your work and support with our changes to the program, um, which have been a, uh, well-received change to the program, and hopefully very soon you'll be seeing, uh, some new easements coming your way.
All right, I'll address this one. So we also have a discussion in this report about public open space. While that is a very different process and different purpose, we find that from a public perspective, their opinions of open space, whether it's publicly accessible or not, really go hand in hand, so we wanted to discuss where we are on parkland numbers. So as of June twenty twenty-three, we have almost thirteen and a half thousand acres of public parkland. For sake of argument, we included Harford Glen in here, given the nature of that property. Um, this might seem like a lot, but we are barely- This might seem like a lot, but we are barely meeting the state recommended 30 acres per thousand residents. We've done some great purchases, particularly in partnership with our Parks and Rec Department, I think it's all Paul over there, in the past few years. So we are doing well on this, but we need to keep going. There are very few large open space parcels in or nearby the development envelope remaining. And when you look at the many planning documents that we and Parks and Rec and the state rely upon, we are really in need of parks to serve our populations in the Bell Camp and Riverside area, Edgewood, Emmerton, and Forest Hill. And this is problematic, because there is not that much open space left there, and what is left is quite expensive. By comparison, Baltimore has double our acreage per capita, and Cecil is about five times our acreage per capita. Also, one of the big measures we looked at in the report of how well we're doing is this contiguous land preservation easements. And so for Maryland, looking at blocks of 1,000 or more acres is really important, because that's where we get the most beneficial returns for agricultural, wildlife, green infrastructure, and growth management. So we have 14 blocks of more than 1,000 acres of preserved land. And this doesn't diminish the importance of those in and around the development envelope, but from a macro standpoint, to get these big returns on a landscape scale, we want to see these large blocks. Hartford County has been nationally recognized for our land preservation programs, and we're still extremely proud and a thought leader in those. We were first in the state for some time. We've been overtaken a little bit by some of our neighbors here. We are now fifth in the state in terms of acres protected, but third, tied for second, I guess I should say, in terms of the percentage of total land. Most of these counties have the same programs that we have. And some of these differences are really because of a different orientation with some of their planning and zoning tools. In particular, the allowances for development in the rural areas have been different across some of these counties. So you see that reflected here in the results. Last year in Maryland, the Maryland the Beautiful Act was passed, and this mirrored a national goal to set a goal to protect 30% of our lands by 2030 and 40% by 2040. So Aberdeen Improving Ground complicates this figure, but if you take that out, we have met our 2030 goal, which is great. We should celebrate that. However, looking forward to 2040 to meet that goal, depending on whether or not you added in Aberdeen Improving Ground, we would need to preserve an additional 20,000 to 35,000 acres. And even if we look at the lower number of the 20,000, based on the last three years of easement prices, this would be an additional $120 million in today's dollars. So that number will only increase each year. Of course, we're looking at smaller properties and more transactions. There are very few properties under 300 acres left unpreserved in this county. It's important to talk about this in context of some major related challenges. Land preservation very much works with other land use issues, so we'd be remiss not to mention these. We are projected to add another 30,000 residents from now to 2045, or 11% growth. Those people all need and deserve a safe and adequate place to live. So housing is an issue in Hartford County as well as Maryland. We are looking at more adaptive reuse of land. We cannot continue to develop on greenfield land indefinitely. That is death by a thousand cuts. We need to look at our developable space that we already have done and use it better. There are also more demands than ever, it feels like, on our land, including commercial, industrial, solar, and other large acreage non-residential developments. And these are some of the biggest conversations at the state level that we're seeing in the legislature as well. Also, the economics of farming is changing, and that's very much reflected in some of the changes in the county's ag preservation program that many of you were part of. So we are going to see more small farms selling directly to consumers. We're also going to see larger farming operations. So in the state, about half of the ground farmed is rented. It's not owner-operated. So we are going to see that larger farming operations with annual sales of more than 500,000 per year. So the big end and the small end, and not as much in the middle. Of course, we have climate change and biodiversity loss, which is happening all over the nation as well. And then finally, to wrap it up, some recommended actions here. There's a lot of text, but a couple highlights to hit is that maintaining that transfer tax, which funds our county program, is paramount. As Jen said, more than half of the land in this county is preserved by our county program, and we are very fortunate to have that. We need to keep the funds going. Also, we talked a little bit about the importance of these parallel planning and zoning tools. So we need to recognize the interplay of things such as the development envelope and other planning and zoning laws and policies and master plan to these land preservation goals. When the next master plan comes around, we might consider mirroring these state goals to have 40% of our land preserved by 2040. The next one on different payment incentives, you know, this was in part done by some of the changes to the recent county programs. So I think we can pat ourselves on the back for that. I talked about public open space. We need to be extremely targeted and bullish and strategic about looking at land purchases in and around the development envelope that are suitable for public open space, even when we might not have the ready funds to build the amenities that would be needed for public access, because that window was going to close to secure those properties. And then lastly, we have, as we said, almost a $1 billion ag industry. We need to look at supporting how that farming industry is changing, and certainly preserve land is part of it, but there are other tools and policies that can work with that to support that industry. With that, I'll close our formal presentation. Thank you for the time, and we're very interested in taking any questions that you have.
Thanks, Kristin, for your presentation. I'm curious, Jen, when do you think we'll get our next list of properties?
That close. We have a big list. It took 19 easement proposals to reach what we had budgeted, because we have smaller acres coming in, which is what we wanted. But that means we have a lot of legislation to write. And so there's been a lot of reviewing and crossing our Ts and dotting our Is. So I'm hoping either this week or next week.
So soon.
Very soon.
Okay. I heard that. I just wanted to be sure.
Very soon.
And then with the easements that we've had in the last program, are they all settled in yet?
They are. We have about, if you count the county ones that haven't come to you yet, we have about 2,000 acres that would be pending between the state program, Rural Legacy, and the county.
Thanks. Counsel? Anyone? Mr. Bennett?
Hello. I appreciate meeting with you earlier and then also your presentation tonight. I know you spoke to some, the pressure for solar on green space, which is something I've brought up from the council floor before as a concern. Just, you know, we need to move towards renewable energy, but making sure we're doing it in a way where we're not giving up our open space for that. Would you say that it would be good action for us as a council to make sure that our commercial spaces that exist are physically equipped to have rooftop solar and, you know, commercial industrial spaces to help mitigate the amount of solar that ends up in open space?
Certainly, I would. And I'm also the Vice Chair of Forever Maryland, which is the Association of Land Trust for the state of Maryland. And that is also a policy principle of that organization. It's very much trying to maximize those compatible uses with the built environment.
Thank you. I appreciate you sharing that. Because I know it's been a back and forth we've had for years talking as council members about that. My other question was just if you could speak to the history of, you know, what happened with the land preservation program in the, you know, late aughts, early 2010s? Because, you know, just looking at that slide, there's that big dip.
There's a big dip.
Yeah.
So if you go back to the one, I mean, you can see, you know, we see all the great big numbers of blue, which is the county program, and then it drops off. So I'm sure most people in this room remember the real estate crash that happened in 2008. So with that went our program for a few years, because our program is funded by a half of a percent real estate transfer tax. So when the transfers of land went down, so did our funding capacity. And so we had to kind of squirrel away the money for a little while until, you know, we had enough to make a substantial effort to move forward again. So there is a few years there where we kind of had to pump the brakes on the program. And also, you know, at that same time, real estate values skyrocketed, and then they, you know, dropped off. So we adjusted our values to try to follow that same market.
And my last question is just, you know, on the, a few slides later where you show where land has been preserved. You know, some of the things I hear from constituents is that, you know, some land that might not be in preservation but is surrounded by preservation or blocked off from the development envelope, like should be considered preserved in essence, because the feasibility of developing on that space has been taken away because of all the other preservation. Is there still benefit in those properties being preserved from an economic perspective or from a protection perspective, even if they're surrounded by land that's already been preserved?
Well, I would say, before coming to the preservation programs, I worked in development review, and developers are pretty creative. So just because they can't develop it today doesn't mean that zoning won't change. Doesn't mean the laws won't change around what can and cannot be developed. And water and sewer can show up in your neighborhood sooner than you expect. So even if they seem like they can't be developed, it still works trying to protect them.
I would also say that for the paid programs, where you receive cash to protect something, there does have to be remaining development potential under current zoning. Again, zoning could change in the future. That doesn't say that you couldn't donate an easement, which has potential tax benefits for doing that. And we have done that in the county. We have a fairly stiff rubric, because we need to make sure it's in the public interest to do that. We do say no more often than we say yes. This is also a permanent or perpetual responsibility for the county or the state or the land trust that carries a cost with it of monitoring and enforcing that easement. And so we wouldn't do it unless we thought that there was some value. Again, in those cases where there's not development potential, they could only donate that easement for potential tax benefits.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Mr. Bennett?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for the presentation. You know, I think the land pres program is an important program, and I appreciate the fact that you acknowledge that it has to be balanced with the economic growth, right? Because one, you know, that develop a property that, you know, allows us to be able to fund the different vital programs like schools and public safety is important, and also provides that taxes through the transfer tax to be able to buy more property for the land pres. So I think it's a careful balance, harmony that we have to have. And, you know, I just hope that everybody understands that going forward as we develop our county.
Mr. Guthrie?
Thank you, Mr. President. I was surprised at those numbers up there for Baltimore County, which is one of the largest counties in the United States, to have that small amount of land preserved. That was really a surprise. And it's a county without a municipality, which is also surprising. I just want to thank you for all your efforts. Certainly in District 8, you've had a couple of successes that I'm very happy with, the 121 acres in the Jopetown area. To make that total facility a park is going to be some kind of a park, and they're working on it, and that's really great. Also, in Edgewood going down Willa Beach Road, just south of the high school on the left, that combine, about 49 acres apiece between the county and that outfit that does investments like that are together. They've joined together for that almost 100 acres, all the way down to the water. It's going to be quite a nice park. It's really going to be something very nice. Also, I think we've come to an agreement of working something out down, further down Willa Beach Road on the way to the park, that one area there about a mile long where it's real narrow and the kids can't get to the park without having to walk literally in the middle of the street. I've had a meeting recently with the county executive, and they're going to widen that and make an area on the far side, because you guys says we can't go on the left side because of turtles. And we got to protect the turtles.
We do.
So it's going to be the other side of the street, provide a walking path and a bike path so the kids can get down there. So that's, and I'm not going to open Pandora's box here, but yes, I am. There's a nice 300-acre facility that you guys can go after in Abington Woods. I'm sure the people in that area would be more than happy. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your time. Agenda item number seven, approval of amendments. Legislative date 24-022, September 3, 2024. Are there any corrections to the minutes? There being no corrections, minutes stand approved. Mr. Pemmern, please read Resolution 015-24 and 016-24 into the record for introduction.
Resolution 015-24, Historic Landmark, Tudor Hall, introduced by Council President at the request of County Executive. A resolution designated Tudor Hall consisting of approximately 8.38 acres, more or less located at 17 Tudor Lane, Bel Air, Maryland 21015, together with its buildings, environmental settings, and appurtenances as a Hartford County Historic Landmark in accordance with Chapter 267 of the Hartford County Code. Resolution 016-24, Historic Landmark, Emmerton Schoolhouse, introduced by Council President at the request of County Executive. A resolution designated Emmerton Two Room Schoolhouse consisting of 32,931 square feet, as identified by the Maryland State Department of Assessment and Taxes, or approximately .76 acres, more or less, as presented to the Historic Preservation Commission, located at 101 East Wheel Road in Bel Air, Maryland, together with its buildings, environmental settings, and appurtenances as a Hartford County Historic Landmark in accordance with Chapter 267 of the Hartford County Code.
Thank you, Mr. Pemmern. Mr. Benson? There you are. You're up front. Very good. Whenever you're ready, sir.
Thank you. Good evening, President Vincenti and members of the council. As we just said, my name is Jacob Benson, and I am the Historic Preservation Planner for Hartford County. I am pleased to be before you tonight with Resolution 015-24 and 016-24 for the designation of Tudor Hall and the Emmerton Two Room Schoolhouse as Hartford County Historic Landmarks. The Hartford County Historic Landmarks and Districts Program is one of the ways that we support the owners of historic properties in Hartford County. Owners of designated properties receive access to the county's Historic Preservation Tax Credit and expert guidance from the staff and members of the County Historic Preservation Commission. At their August 7, 2024, public meeting, the Hartford County Historic Preservation Commission recommended Tudor Hall, located at 17 Tudor Lane near Bel Air, for designation as a Hartford County Historic Landmark. It is nominated by the Hartford County Historic Preservation Commission itself with the consent of its owner, Hartford County. The nomination is supported by the Junius B. Booth Society, which operates the museum at Tudor Hall. It is identified as a historic site by Maryland Inventory of Historic Places, excuse me, Historic Properties, MIHP, number HA-117, and is listed on the National Register of Historic Places. The proposed landmark boundary shown in the map on this slide consists of approximately 8.38 acres and is confined to the current property tax parcel. The photos here show the facade, including its Gothic Revival detailing and a view of the house from the grounds. This slide shows a site map of the property, including Tudor Hall itself, the historic outbuildings, which include the spring house, workshop, stable, and barn ruins, and the man-made pond. A modern garage, parking lot, and driveway are also located on the property. These photos show the historic spring house up at the top left, followed by the workshop, stable, and barn ruins. Tudor Hall was built around 1850 to 1852 and is significant as a well-preserved example of the residential Gothic Revival style of architecture and for its association with the Booth family's contributions to the development of the American Theater, as well as its association with the United States Civil War. This nomination is not intended as a glorification of John Wilkes Booth or his murder of President Abraham Lincoln. It is an acknowledgement of the historical and architectural significance that the property has gained over its 170 years. At their July 3, 2024, public meeting, the Hartford County Historic Preservation Commission recommended the Emmerton Two Room Schoolhouse, located at 101 East Wheel Road within the former Crossroads Village of Emmerton, near Bel Air, for designation as a Hartford County Historic Landmark. It is nominated by- Historic Landmark. It is nominated by its owner, Dr. Linda Freilich. It is identified as a historic site by Maryland Inventory of Historic Properties, number HA-2304. The proposed landmark boundary, as shown in the map on the slide, consists of approximately 32,931 square feet and is confined to the current property tax parcel. The property includes the historic schoolhouse, as well as several modern outbuildings and parking lots. These photos show the exterior of the historic school building, which faces onto Old Emmerton Road. Although the building has had multiple uses since its closing as a school, it has retained integrity of both form and design. The Emmerton two-room schoolhouse is one of the few pre-World War II buildings remaining within the historic village of Emmerton, reflecting its early 20th century development as a crossroads village. The building is also reflective of the history of public education in Harford County. First, as a general education school for white students from 1920 until 1958, and then as the Emmerton Special School Harford Center Annex, serving students with learning disabilities from 1958 until 1976. In addition to its main purpose of serving as a place of education, the school building was an important gathering place for the Emmerton community as a site for meetings and events sponsored by the Emmerton Grange, the Mary Maidens Four-Age Club, the Harford County Farm Bureau, and the nearby Mount Carmel Church. Thank you for your time this evening, and I would be happy to answer any questions you may have regarding these nominations.
Thank you, Jacob. Counsel, any time for, time for questions? Any questions? Mr. Bennett.
On that last property, I'm familiar with it because Emmerton Snowballs was where my friends rode bikes to growing up. The snowball stand's going to be included in the historic recognition for tax purposes?
So the, the entire property would be included. The snowball stand would be what we consider a non-contributing part of the property at this point. It is not yet 50 years of age, but the Preservation Commission did recommend, as part of the recommendation, that when it reaches 50 years of age, because of its important part of the community today, that it be considered, that it be reconsidered as a potential contributing part.
And how does that impact any changes and so on that can be made to that portion of the property?
So under the current zoning code, any alterations to the property that require a permit would require the, a review by the Harford County Historic Preservation Commission. For the non-contributing buildings, we would, unless it's something that requires a permit or it's something that may affect the contributing building, which in this case is, is just the schoolhouse right now, we would not be looking at a review requirement at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Anyone else? Mr. Benson, I want to thank you for the presentation. We will consider this on the 17th, be the next week, yes. Okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Agenda item number nine, introduction of bills. We have none. Ten, introduction and consideration of amendments. We have none. Eleven, call for final reading of bills. We have none. Twelve, unfinished business. We have none. Thirteen, new business, executive requests for outside counsel. Mr. Blumquist. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Good evening, Council President Vincente and members of the council. This is my request for outside counsel. The, the request is to get both title, title work and legal document work for economic, for economic development loans to commercial enterprises. We, some years have none of these, some years we have three to five of these. We're anticipating that we could have in that neighborhood in fiscal year 2025. So we're requesting this service because the law department does not specialize in title work, and so we'd need to go to someone to get the title work. And it is helpful for the settlement purposes and the recording purposes to, to do all this with someone that specializes in this and does lots of transactions, tens if not hundreds of transactions yearly, as opposed to the law department. That, that's just not, you know, that's not what we do. That's not where we've acquired practitioners with those skills. So from an economic standpoint, from a time commitment standpoint, it makes a lot of sense to do this. The cost is low. The cost is not paid from the Department of Law budget. The cost is not paid with general fund revenues. The cost is paid through the grant funds for the commercial loans that we receive. In other words, the borrower pays the costs. We've recommended the Sank Stack, that was after, Sank Stack, I apologize. That was after getting three bids and actually a, a, another bid was obtained later on because of, we thought these were going to go in August.
Jefferson, if you would, if you'd speak into the microphone, they're telling me they can't hear you.
Sorry. We thought this was going to go in August. It, it, it's not going until now. This was the lowest combined bid for the service. The Sank Stack certainly has a title company, can provide the level of service that's necessary. These are not overly complicated transactions. The, the biggest concern is to make sure we do the title searches as well as we do in-house the SDAT searches so that whomever these loans are being made to, we know that the loans aren't going to be leaned upon or otherwise dissipated in an unintended function. They're going to be used for the commercial development that, that they're intended to support.
Thank you. And I want to thank you for making the time to come over and, and answer the questions that Ms. Legend and I had in reference to the presentation tonight. We do have copies of the bids. We do have all of the questions answered that we provided them. So, counsel, at this time, if anyone has any questions, Mr. Pembott.
Mr. President, thank you. Mr. Blumquist, I appreciate you being here. I appreciate the executive branch opening this small business opportunity because I fully support the Economic Development Opportunity Fund. It can be a positive impact for our community. As we know, we need to make sure we have that economic stimulus in our community so we can pay for the things, the resources that the county provides. Now, do you know the type or size of the small business that Harford County is interested in adopting into this program?
It's done by the Department of Economic Development. So I'm, I'm not, I'm not intimately involved with it. I, I, I know there's criteria that are spout out in the grant documents and we follow the criteria in the grant documents for making the loans to commercial enterprises. If you'd like more information on that, I can certainly have Ms. Holt or Mr. Gold from Economic Development provide that information to you and we'd be happy to do so.
No, and I, I appreciate that because I was just concerned about the vision because it, it references the small business standard of the federal standard, which I read, it was kind of, I'll just read it because it's kind of hard to tell exactly what they're saying. It says Article 121, 102, the federal code considers and measures small business size standard by the structure of the industry, degree of competition, firm size, is not dominant in its field, startup costs, barriers, technologies changes, competition from industries, growth trends, the store. So it's kind of like, I didn't know what, what scope they were, they were considering for these things. So if they have some, you know, some, some information about that, what they're looking for, I'd be happy to have that.
I'll, I'll certainly convey that and, and get back to you on that. Thank you.
The other question I had, you answered, you could have zero one year, you could have three or four the next year. I do have some concerns about hiring outside counsel to contract for this. And, you know, and the first thing that I have, the concern I have is that fee and the fee agreement is going to be passed on to the individual businesses. I appreciate the taxpayers not paying for it, but, you know, it's still a burden to the small business. And that's what we're trying to help, right? We're trying to help the small business. And looking at the fee agreement, I'm just going to go down some of the fees that, that are listed there. A settlement fee, fee of $995, appraisal fee, the tax fee, the flood certificate fee, the environmental fee, the processing fee, the lender fee, the credit report fee, and, and again, the attorney fee of $500. And I just think that's probably counterproductive to stack on all these fees when we're trying to help and stimulate small business. So the next question I have, though, is, is, you know, with-
If I, if you don't mind.
Sure, certainly.
Yes. Those fees would be much less than for us using one of our contractors, for example, to use a phase one environmental assessment. In other words, the reason why I'm recommending this service and, and not for us to do it in-house is in terms of the time it would take us and in terms of most of those fees that you just listed, outside of the legal fee, which is for document preparation and filing, are fees that, that we're, we're going to pay to someone because they're not services we perform. We don't perform, we, we don't do appraisals. There's no one in, in the county executive branch that's qualified to do appraisals. So we hire, you know, we have a list of outside appraisers and we hire outside appraisers. And, and so I, I share your concern and it's, it's certainly a legitimate and valid concern that we want to put as little cost as possible on the borrowers so they can get the maximum benefit because they need these loans for economic development. We share that concern. That's a, that's a very important concern. It's a, it's a concern worthy of note. And I'm coming to you with this recommendation because really for the, the suite of services we're getting, the suite of title services that we're getting, that's, quite frankly, a very, very reasonable price. And it's, it's the lowest price that we got.
Right. And, and I, I get some of those, you know, the private market is, specializes in, but I think the attorney aspect of things, didn't the law department handle these responsibilities in the past?
The law department has done some of the document work. And, and my understanding is from time to time, some of the original documents came from Miles and Stockbridge. They're hourly, they, they bill us on an hourly rate, not, not, you know, not a service rate. They, they really bring, you know, much more to the table than we need because these are, you know, basic transactions. So we work with them, but I don't have a huge shop.
Right.
You, you have been generous in providing, I think, a workable shop. And, and so in balancing, you know, what we can do efficiently and, and what it really behooves us to go outside to keep our efficiency and to keep us from growing internally, that's why, that's why I'm here. And I, I think that's what this does.
Yeah, but it's a shop that, you know, the county executive has declared that he wants to do things in-house, right? And I think, you know, on March 14th of 2023, when he presented to this very council, I'll give you a statement that he wrote, actually read or, or said, I should say, "You know, when we came into this office, we really didn't have a law department. We had a law contracting department that contracted out virtually everything, and we were spending millions of dollars on legal fees. My administration started, we've been in the process of actually building a legitimate law department with real lawyers who understand the civil law and not squander the county's resources on $400 an hour lawyers." So the county resources, I think, would include small businesses' funds, right?
Well, Councilmember Pembott, I certainly respect what you're saying, but if you remember during the budget process hearings when we were here in, in April, in May and June, well, April, April and May, I can't remember exactly when I was over here. If you recall, we've spent hundreds of thousands, I think it was over $600,000 or less in outside counsel fees with no increase in, in, in our attorney budget at all. So we have worked very hard to efficiently provide services, and, and that's what the Office of General Counsel does. The, the Office of General Counsel, you know, unless, unless you build a, a much larger office than we have, and, and, you know, and some counties have tens, close, close to 100 attorneys. And that's certainly not where we are at nine. This is part of balancing the efficiency of, of providing a, a, a large suite of services. And when we have a niche service, such as this title work and this document preparation, the closings, the record, the, the recordings, the filings with the land records, those aren't transactions that the county engages in a lot of in an annual basis. And the cost is the minimus compared to the cost for other services that, that we have staffed ourselves to provide. So from a cost benefit standpoint, it's my determination, you're certainly entitled to question that determination. I deem this to be a very wise use of county funds. It, it really is a very small amount, $500 per transaction for the, for the quantity of services provided and for the time and effort it would take those that, that are on my team to perform because it's not what we do on a regular basis whatsoever. So I appreciate, I appreciate your concerns. That, that would be my response to those concerns.
No, and, and I appreciate that. But that was declared, you know, a year and a half ago, that they wouldn't use $400 an hour outside firms. I'm just concerned what's changed between March 23 and today. And I'm glad, because you kind of led into my next question, when you presented the budget, you did, you provided a list of all the attorneys that were hired from outside counsel. And it's, it's a fairly large list. And I can know of two, with one of them being, could be this one, and, and the other one firsthand, that's been not on this list. So what I would ask you to do is, is there a way that you can provide an updated list to the council on all the outside attorneys that you have hired in your department?
Sure, sure. And we, we do that during the budget process and I will continue to provide that information every year during the budget process.
Sir, are you saying you're going to wait till the budget process to provide that?
That, that was my intention.
Well, could you provide it a little earlier? Would that be possible?
I, I believe it's possible.
Thank you. I appreciate that. My next question is about the firm that will be contracted for this Economic Development Opportunity Loan, which I have a great respect for Diane Sank Stack. I've worked on committees with Diane. I think she's a great person, a competent person. But I have to argue the merits of why we're doing this. And that's, that's what leads in my next question. Because it's a large responsibility for an outside counsel and a smaller firm outside counsel. Because if you look at the, the bill and the, the fee agreement, there's a lot of responsibilities that are listed on there. And I'll just go over a few. Loan settlements, loan documents, title examination, lender title insurance, title work, survey lien certificates resolving all issues, loan documents, payoff statements, handling all money and disbursements, receipts obtained, records and release of payoff entities. So that's a lot of financial implications and liabilities for a firm. Do we know exactly what error in emissions insurance that this firm has?
I, I don't have that on the tip of my hand, so I'm, I'm sure they have errors in emissions insurance.
You're, you're sure they did? Did, did we verify that?
They work with, they work through Home Title. And, and I know people that work with Home Title. That's, Home Title's one of the biggest and, and most reputable firms. So they're the ones who are providing the insurance. And I, I can tell you, if Ms. Sank, Sank Stack did not have a good reputation, they would pull their, they would pull from her services. I know attorneys that, that have worked with Home Title before, have not done a good job, have, have, there's been litigation. Home Title covers that litigation and, and has dropped those attorneys from their title insurance program because they did not do good work. So I, I think that's where that, that's where that comfort level comes from. It comes from Home Title that is an insurer, that provides the expertise of, if Ms. Sank Stack doesn't do a good job and misses something and that results in litigation. That's, that's how the process works.
I, I'm confident Ms. Sank Stack would do a great job. But a lot of, actually almost every contract that, you know, that is bitted out, the contractor's going to have to provide some level of insurance, proof of insurance. And I just, did the law department ever ask for that? Do we, do we have that?
That's what the Home Title is. That's, that's what I just explained to you. Home Title, if, if a mistake is made in any of, of the title work, the lien searches, the judgment searches, that results in a problem with this transaction, Home Title, which is a national company, been in business for decades, they fund the litigation, they clean up the problem.
So Home Title provided what you, what I'm asking for?
And, and what happens if the attorney screws up, and, and that may not be the most judicious term, I apologize. It's like, if, if a mistake is made, the title company steps in and takes care of it and the attorney pays because Home Title discontinues providing the insurance to them. So, so that's what I was trying to explain. I, I may not have done a competent job of it. And I apologize if I didn't. But, but that's, that's what the Home Title insurance is doing.
And my question is, whoever, Home Title, the Sank Stack firm, that, you know, I just, I just want to make sure that proof of insurance, in case someone mistakenly makes an error and with, you know, revenues, loans, county taxpayer dollars, that there's just some checks and balances there.
Mr. Pembott, before we go any further, let me stop you just a minute so we can get some other folks in here.
I just have one more.
The last one.
Last one, last one. Okay. My question is, why, why are you bringing this to the council? Why are you bringing this outside counsel request for approval to the council?
Because in conversations with Council President Vincente, I would- Because in conversations with Council President Vincente, I would rather try to work with you than at odds with you. And so that's why I'm bringing it to the council.
Well, that always hasn't been the case. But, you know, my belief, you're doing it based off the code. Are you familiar with the code?
Mr. Pennman, let me just stop you right there. We're going to move to someone else. Ms. Sodles?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Just two quick questions. How many companies responded to the request for bid?
It was key title, and it was gets title and gets legal. And then we also went later on to Ms. Hemlager with the Sne Law Group. Well, I'm not sure exactly what the name is that they're going by now. And that was the most expensive, but I take it, it's kind of the way they do business. I don't know. The transactions aren't complicated. It's really the title work that's the essence of.
Yeah, I'm familiar with title work as I'm in real estate, so.
I know that.
I just want, did you interview all of those companies?
I did not interview them. Ms. Dubois from our office spoke with all of them and did a question and answer, you know, so that they were comfortable. They knew what our expectations were, and we knew what they were providing. And I have those documents, which I can provide to you if you would like.
Okay.
The documents that we got from the other people that gave us quotes.
That would be great.
I'll do that.
This does seem very reasonable. I just wanted to find out who was actually interviewed and what their pricing was like in comparison.
Absolutely. I thought I'd give those to Council President Vincente, but I will make sure to get those over to your office tomorrow.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. I just wanted to, it's not often that I argue in agreement with you, but I just want to say, I think this is a perfect example of when it's appropriate to use outside counsel. It's at no additional cost to us as an operating county government. And it's not something that you're consistently taking care of in your office. It's a once every year and there duty that, you know, the time it would take to train, to staff, and to appropriately handle something like this that takes, you know, specialty training, it's just, it's more appropriate to reach out to someone else. So I appreciate that you're doing that. And I just think it's unfair to compare a situation like this to the county executive's quote from a year and a half ago that's talking about very different type of work, the consistent law work where you're going to outside counsel for something in perpetuity that you're constantly taking care of. So I just wanted to state, you know, I think this is a totally appropriate use of outside counsel and at no extra cost to the community and a reasonable fee for those who are utilizing the grants. I fully support what you're asking from us.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Mr. Guthrie, do you have anything?
Just a comment. I agree with Mr. Bennett, Councilman Bennett. Certainly, it's my 14th year on the council. I've had a lot of these come up in front of us, you know, and they're all worthy of our vote and support. And so when it comes down to a vote, I'll be in favor of it.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Mr. Pennman, one last thing?
Sure. I just want to follow up on what the code allows, right? The code, I'm just going to read the code. "The county executive may, with the approval of the council, employ special counsel to work on problems of extraordinary nature when the work is to be done is such a character or a magnitude as requires services in addition to those regularly provided by the law department," right? Are you familiar with that?
That's not the code. That's the charter.
The charter, excuse me.
I am familiar with it. I'm familiar with all provisions in the charter.
Article 2, Department of Law Section.
I'm not here to argue. I'm here to try to have everyone understand what my request is.
And my question is, what is the difference before, when the law department didn't come to the council, and now? Because I support this business opportunity. I really do. I'm just trying to clarify on when is it appropriate for the law department to come to the council? What's the difference now? Or is it appropriate to go to the Board of Estimates?
I'll be happy to discuss that with you individually. I'm not going to take further time here. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Blunklist. Anyone else? As I said, we won't move on this tonight. We'll do it on the 17.
I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Agenda item number 18, comments and input from attending citizens?
We have one, Mr. President. Bill Whalen.
Good evening, sir. Name and address, please.
Good evening. Before I begin, is it any possibility we could have that podium put here?
Anything's possible.
Oh, I know. But can it be done?
Anything's possible, Mr. Whalen.
Thank you. Bill Whalen, 415 Cedar Springs Road, Bel Air, Maryland 21015. I was unable to attend the final legislative session on June 18th, but my comments were sent by email each council member prior to that session. My comments were not new. A need for zoning code changes to define super living homes, recovery residence, halfway houses, and their permitted use by district. Two, define and clarify Board of Appeals, that is County Council, decision enforcement authority. Both of these matters have caused past problems because of interpretation and lack of definition, leading to unnecessary time and expense for citizens. I made the county aware of the county attorney's position, which is the executive branch is not obligated to enforce final decisions of the zoning board of appeals, and pursuit of enforcement actions is a policy left to the discretion of the executive branch. This is not defined anywhere in the Carter Code. There's no authority given to the branch to review, reverse, or ignore the decisions of the Board of Appeals. Excuse me. I requested comments from the council and received none. I believe the council is statuized with status quo, mainly because not being involved when cases, only when cases are appealed to you for final argument. The council's only heard three cases and a fourth is scheduled next week. No council enforcement action is taken when P and Z fails to execute the hearing examiner's decision. Last December, Mr. Bennett and I had meaningful dialogue on this matter. Can't go into details. Time. Think about this. P and Z continues to have, if they have, continue to have sole enforcement, authority and power to pick and choose what they enforce or not enforce on the final decision of the Board of Appeals. That becomes meaningless to them. To my knowledge, there are no written policies, procedures, or process for execution of enforcement actions by P and Z or the county council. I met with the county executive and his staff on September 4th on the same issues. I provided a seven-page summary report of the problems in my recommended code revisions. The report was appreciated, well-received, and meaningful discussions. I did not expect immediate action and suspect people discuss my recommendations with his administrative staff. Time will tell what action will be taken, if any. Perhaps the administration prefers status quo. They presently have the upper hand and authority and see possibly no need for change. In closing, unfortunately, my personal experience with local government has been lack of transparency, accountability, credibility, or communication. The majority of the time, citizens have a say in how our government governments and not be ignored as I and others continue to experience. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Whalen. Anyone else? That's it?
There's no more speakers, Mr. President.
Thank you. We'll go to agenda item number 17, business from council members. Mr. Pennman?
My thoughts and prayers go out to the family members, the school staff, the students who have been tragically impacted by this selfless, senseless act, excuse me, in Joppa. I would also like to thank the first responders and the school staff who violently responded and reacted to this horrific event. Whether in school or in our communities, that needless loss of life should never occur. As the investigation continues, I'm committed to thoroughly examining the circumstances that contributed to this terrible crime and engage in a meaningful conversation with community members, council members, and school representatives. Together, we will identify and evaluate preventive measures that could have been taken to prevent this reprehensible act from ever occurring. And also, I want to pass on my thoughts and prayers for the Giandridanno family and my condolences as well. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Riley?
Yes, I'd like to thank the Miracle League and for their installation of new lights, especially from our state delegation. Also, the Hartford Association Realtors, they installed their officers this afternoon. Congratulations to every one of them, especially Veronica, who got promoted. Now she's CEO. And again, I want to send my prayers out to Tony, but also Big Al. Just want to let you know I love you, brother.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. Or Ms. Sodles?
Thank you, Council President. Today is Hunger Action Day, where food banks and organizations are rallying to highlight and address hunger in our communities. With one in three people in Maryland experiencing food insecurity, it's crucial to seek help if needed or to support the Maryland Food Bank by visiting their website at marylandfoodbank.org. I'd like to send condolences to Councilmember Giordano's family as well. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sodles. Mr. Bennett?
Hello. Good evening. First, I just want to apologize, Mr. Whalen, for not getting back to you. I falsely had assumed that our previous communication had covered where I stand. And I never want to leave someone feeling unheard, so I apologize for not getting back to you this summer.
That wasn't meant for you, Mr. Bennett, if I may say. You did respond and you retent on the issue. I just couldn't.
Mr. Whalen, just, he can talk to you after the meeting.
Yep. I just wanted to make sure to say that publicly, because I hate to ever leave someone feel left unanswered. You know, with everything that happened this past week, you know, it's incredibly tragic for a time I taught at Magnolia Middle School. And I know many people who taught the young boy who passed away this past week, who knew him dearly. He was on the Magnolia Middle School basketball team. And it's just a very sad time. I know a lot of people are looking for something to do, something to feel productive, like we're working towards a solution so something like this doesn't happen again. I encourage people to attend Board of Ed meetings, the CAB meetings, our county council meetings. I think one of the biggest things you can do right now is join Joppa Town High School's PTA. You don't have to be a parent or a teacher at Joppa Town High School to join. You can join as a community member for $8 a year. And then that money can be used by the Joppa Town community to take action directly in their school to get something done. So I encourage everybody to spend $8 to directly support Joppa Town, their parents, their teachers, their students, and to be able to help in that way. Beyond that, I'm continuing to have conversations across the state with other county governments to see what are actions that we can take, both immediately and looking forward into the future to make our kids and our educators safer at school. You know, condolences go out to Tony and his family right now. And Dion, praying for your family as well, so that, you know, all can go well. And also, just, it's a very sad week, but, you know, tomorrow is September 11th, and I just want to make sure that we all recognize that date and never let it cross by. It's just a regular day on the calendar to think of all our country's been through in 23 years. I was in first grade at the time. But to make sure that we think of how we rebuilt and how we can make it through anything as a nation, and to always let that day be remembered. So that's all for tonight, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Mr. Guthrie?
Thank you, Mr. President. In regards to Warren Grant, the young man that was, lost his life in that Joppa Town mess, his visitation rights, for those who are interested, it's going to be Thursday, September 19th, from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. and 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. at the McComas Funeral Home in Abington. Also, again, also Friday, September 20th, from 10:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. Funeral services will be Friday, September 20th, starting at 11:00 a.m. at Mount Christian Church. The young man who allegedly pulled the trigger is, when we're reading some of the stuff that we found, it certainly has a long list of wrongdoing and criminal activity and probably shouldn't even been on the street. Both these young men are from Edgewood, and now, you know, one's dead, the other's life is ruined, and hopefully he'll be in jail forever. It's very, very sad. All four of my children went to Joppa Town High School. They can't believe it. They all graduated from there. My 58 years living in Joppa Town, I can't believe it myself. Also, of course, I met with the principal, and I have some conversation with the principal also at Joppa Town High. And of course, my phone and everything has been flooded with phone calls and emails and everything else about this whole situation. And what upsets me about a situation like this and in Georgia, and when this kind of stuff happens, is that we'll have these kind of conversations, politicians in Annapolis and in Washington, D.C., we'll have a lot of conversations and talk about it. And, you know, a couple of weeks, it'll start to drag out. Then by a month, it's all forgotten about, and nobody does a damn thing about it. Well, you know, it's time we got to stop talking about this stuff and really do something. Every incident is different, but it just boggles my mind how our politicians can't get something passed, even a simple thing like a background check, to find out if somebody isn't an imbecile or crazy or something, and allow them to be able to go out and buy a gun without having a background check. You know, I guess, I don't know what we're going to do, because we can't get their attention, or they argue with each other, and then the gun lobby, you know, pays them all off, and then it goes by the wayside. So I'm upset with it. My family's upset with it. And I talked to a lot of, when I went down there, when I got the call, Pat called me. I was at my doctor's getting a checkup, and he called me when it happened. And so I cut my visit with the doctor short and came right up to Joppa Town. Saw a lot of my friends and family there, and everybody's just shaking their head. So we just need to all get together and do something and stop talking about it and really do something. Or this country is, every time you pick up the phone, every time my phone clicks over here, and there's something else happening in another state where somebody shot somebody. So I don't know the answer, but unless we all get together and try to do something about it, you know, it's not going to change. Also, we're having a fundraiser for the family of Warren this Saturday. It's September 14th, up in Cobehaven Park, the football field. They're going to have all the little leagues and all the football and have them running football games all day long. And from 9:00 in the morning to 9:00 at night, for 12 hours, they're going to be there. And the main reason there is to attract people to come and donate to make a donation for the family. We did this the other night, and just on a whim, and we were able to collect over $700. And one night, we had pots and people putting money in. So we appreciate it. It's also a GoFundMe page if you can help out. You can help out the family. We'll appreciate it. Also, on September 28th, Joppa Town's going to have Latorre and start at 9:30 a.m. to bring everybody's attention to the terrible problem we've had on the Gunpowder River with the mud situation with the runoff. I have seen now, there's a major lawsuit being filed against that developer to the tune of each incident. Well, now we got some serious money. Will be $25,000 an incident, per incident, per day. So maybe we're going to get some attention, and hopefully that'll generate into a million dollars or more that the county can get to help dredge that gunpowder, because that's the next thing we're going to have to do. We're going to have to dredge it. So also, I know we got comp rezoning. For some reason, I got more than anybody in my district. I got 17 applications for zoning changes. And actually, the number 16 has I got 17 applications for zoning changes, and, and actually, the number 16 has 10 changes in that one, that one request. There's 10 different zoning changes in the one request, so that's something, I've already got, like, my legislative aide made me a booklet, and I'm going to every single one of them to see, so I know what I'm talking about. Thank you, Mr. President, and let's get back to normal.
Thank you, Mr. Guthrie. Agenda item number 16, business from the president. I too want to recognize 9/11 tomorrow, want to thank our first responders, law enforcement, for all they do for us every day. I absolutely want to recognize those that paid the ultimate sacrifice on September 11th, 2001, and I hope we never forget. I want to congratulate my brothers and sisters at the Rotary Club of Aberdeen yesterday for an outstanding golf tournament. They do so much to give back to the community, and when they say "service above self," they're not kidding. Also, congratulate the Miracle League for their lights and ribbon cutting there, the Realtors Association today, I want to wish Kathy McFadden a great retirement, and then also welcome Veronica Rollicott as the new CEO. And with that, we'll go ahead and adjourn this meeting.